Meeting on tonight is Wednesday, September the first. Good evening, I'm Alex Norris, the mayor.
I'm Kane Nacito, City Commissioner.
I'm Tony Neely, Commissioner Posey.
I'm U.S. City Commissioner.
I'm Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Please join me in the final. Thank you. First of all, this evening, we get to swear in. We get to swear in a new police officer, which you will find very enjoyable. But before we do that, Oregon City now and then is presented with some really wonderful artifacts that people find, and we were given one again. And this is a, actually it's a man that I know, some of whom know Dan Thompson, who used to work for Oregon City School District. He found this at an estate sale in Portland in March and wanted to present it to the city. And it says, "Oregon City Elevator Dedication, May 5th, 1955." We don't know whether, you know, what part of the ceremony it was, or whatever, but on behalf of, and with grateful appreciation to Dan Thompson and his wife, we will present this to Nancy Ives, for the archives of the city. But here we sit here so we can shine in glory for the entire rest of the meeting. So that's very fun, and I have some of that. Oh, oh, there it is, yes. And of course, if you go to the elevator, you can see those antiquated prints on the wall of the elevator as well. And then next week, something came in the mail that was also for the Oregon City Archives that I'm eager to share with you at our next City Commission meeting. So stay tuned. That's your teaser. Now, as I see, I believe our new police officer is just about ready to go. We will have the oath of office for our K-9 officer Rico. And Officer Shockley, did you want to come forward and talk to us a little bit about Titus, who was the very first K-9 that we swore in, actually a German, because he was a German dog? And what about how Titus has sort of benefited Oregon City and the department?
Well, most of you know him. Officer Dan Shockley, most commonly known as Titus Hammer. So, most people are probably opposed to me as, hey, don't you have Titus? Anyways, he's a great asset for the department. As most of you know, he's our first police officer. In 2003, with the help of the citizens, businesses, he raised over $35,000 to start our K-9 program. Since that time, Titus has been phenomenal. His very first K-9 deployment was a week after we got back from K-9 school. And his very first deployment, he found a guy hiding up in an attic. And I knew right away I had something special with this dog. And I was extremely blessed and fortunate to have a dog that really wanted to work, and it's a happy desire and the ability. As a new handler, you're kind of figuring things out. He had to figure it out before I did, let's put it that way. So, it actually, to go back to that, his very first K-9 call he went on, he found from him, which is, now I realize is not heard of. Since that time, Titus has been on over 300 K-9-related deployments. Out of that 300 deployments, he's responsible for over 100 captors of fines or surrender of bad guys. Out of that, the 100 related captors, 22 of those he might have latched on to as far as his dog bite. Not serious stuff, but you know, that's, he was doing his job. He's been phenomenal as far as his overall drive, personality, demeanor. It's been, it's been a great opportunity. I was asked to share one of his highlights of his career. It's kind of hard for me to actually go over that because he has some just amazing fines and things that I'm like, where did that guy come from? But the one that really stands out for me, we've been in there a couple of years, and I stopped the guy for a driving while talking. I walked up to the car, and as I walked up to the car, I kind of noticed the brake lights were on, and kind of that funny feeling that something wasn't quite right. As I get up to the car, and the window, the guy kicks off in his 1985 Lincoln Continental. So I get in my car, and we start chasing after the guy, Titus and I. And we get about, I don't know, a few miles on the road, and all of a sudden I see the brake lights come on on the car that we're chasing. Then I see the reverse light come on. So, I'm too close to backup, and I'm too close to go anywhere else, so the guy ran at me pretty hard in his car. Fortunately, my car is still drivable. He snapped the front end pretty good, but it was still operable. We kept chasing after the guy, and after a pretty significant amount of time, we were able to spike his tires with the road spikes. He crashed his car into a long driveway off of, how was he, 13? The dark outside was about, I don't know, 1:00 in the morning. You couldn't see anything really outside. I see the guy running off in the distance, and then I see my cover officer kind of excited, starting to run after the guy, which, when you have a dog, it's kind of the last thing you want to do is be the first guy to chase after the bad guy. Unfortunately, my dog is great, but he doesn't, you know, can't tell if it's in uniform a good guy or a bad outside, so. Fortunately, the cover officer realized what he was doing, which is he got to the curb to my door. Without being said, I have a button on my belt, or my, now on my vest, that defines my back door. So I see a guy running out into the distance about 50 yards away. I didn't have to tell Titus anything else to do, I pushed the button on my belt, and he did exactly what he needed to do. No commands, I simply started my spotlight down the driveway, hit the flag, about, I think he got about 75 to 100 yards away. And Titus actually apprehended him, just in the driveway. The guy ended up being charged with, I think, attempted assault, too, on his officer. I was highly intoxicated, I met him seven minutes, but it was just cool for me to see that I didn't have to tell my dog what to do. I simply pushed the button on my belt, and away he went, so. He was watching the whole time, but any of those times, that was just one that always came out to me as being just a great moment for him and his dog, so. So, I'll talk about Rico real quick. Rico is a two-and-a-half-year-old dog from Malinois. You'll notice that he's much different looking than Titus. He looks more as a Jaeger, our other police dog. Just very energetic, despite not being here right now, please. You finished training? We haven't done training yet. I just will retire here in a couple of weeks. Rico and I will start training together in about, probably the second week of October. We have to go through the state certification certified training, which will be about 240 hours. Once we pass that, we can then leave the road. He's already figured things out. I just had him on a traffic stop with me just now, he can't be used, but I put a guy in handcuffs, and he went crazy, which to me, it's something, you already have an idea of what this game is about, which is a good plan. The training will be based out of these chains that we'll be going through. With I-1, I was out of California. I'll spend three weeks down there, two weeks up here. And once we're done with that training, like I said, we'll be, we'll be on the road. And it's more or less the way of Rico and I to bond, figure out his quirks, he can figure out my quirks, learn more of his demeanor. You know, when Titus finds somebody he can't get to, he just fades. So I know if Titus found somebody, it's something I picked up over the years. I don't know Rico's personality, yet to know what his ins and outs are. That's what the training will be for. So once that happens, by probably Thanksgiving, Rico and I should be fully ready to go and be on the road, ready for action, which is about the same time Titus was 2003, so. I'll bring Rico in real quick. I've just been bringing him out, he's really excited, so. Titus is certainly right at home with me. He didn't like that today when he saw another dog get in the car, so. I'm glad for me, that Titus, he's glad for me to realize that I'm not going to be with me anymore. I'm going to miss that spending in the car all day long if he does. I know he's got a lot of room, but I'm actually going to miss him more. But Titus will spend, he'll live his life with me at home, so I get two highly trained police officers with me. I took it to have two dogs right now, so, you know, they go over to Titus, and let him out of the kennel, and pet him, and play with him, and Rico, not yet, because I don't know his personality well enough to just let him go run around the kids, but yeah. So Titus and Rico both love the kids. Any questions real quick, before I go get Rico? A lot of, hey, thanks for the local food, it's all by dog food. And then Pakistanis, that's still going, it's all of our dog hair. So we are extremely fortunate, and you take care. Yeah, two dogs, a lot of food.
Community has been very supportive.
It's been, it's been a real, we wouldn't have the program right now if it wasn't for you guys and support, and he's been extremely valuable, invaluable asset to, not only our city, but, you know, when I first had Titus, I was going all over Portland, you know, Sandy, up on the mountain, all over the place. So he's also benefited other agencies and neighboring departments, so.
Thank you for your time.
It depends on the, Titus is not a bad hip, so the trip was longer. The Malinois, which we have now, they're known for less hip problems. So, there was a guy down at the school when I got Titus, or Rico, the dog was under 13 years. So which is a hood, but it just depends on the dog.
So I'm just glad you were allowed to get Rico, because he actually will be a sworn officer of our police department, so. We have a lot of public credit around here. Let's look again. While we're waiting, I believe that you have an announcement. Do you have to make that request?
Yes, we have a new building official on our presence tonight. I want to ask Tony Conkle if you'd introduce our new building official.
Oh, great. Please introduce Thomas Hozie. Tom joins us from Indio, California, where he's the building official down there. So he's come up here with his family, we'll be joining him eventually. Tom has 20 years' experience in the public sector, 31 years of experience in development. He has a bachelor's in public administration, 16 international build council certificates, brings great managing experience, safety and building code experience and expertise to Oregon City. I think he'll be a great fit, I don't know if we could spend some time together. Obviously, he started on Monday, and I just couldn't be happier than the wonderful work I've done so far. And so I'd like to introduce Tom Hozie, and just a little update if you'd like, and...
Welcome to Oregon City, and welcome to our building department. Let's give him a warm Oregon City welcome.
I was happy to be present and be here. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd actually like to commend your staff, all the staff, myself have been thoroughly professional, I think they're going to be a pleasure to work with. I like this new boy for 24 years, two others, 22 and 17, and that's the one for all.
Rico, you are going to speak. Hey Rico, can you raise your paw? Would you like to repeat after, on behalf of Rico? I, Rico, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon. Rico, pay attention. And I will do the best of my abilities faithfully perform the duties of Police Officer of Oregon City, Oregon. Given a green my occupancy thereof. All right, Rico, you are now official.
So this is really nice, and you're lucky to live in the Texas, like, maybe a great car, and power, and everything.
What's the beat again?
The hell of a lot.
A hell of a lot. Oh, Malinois.
Thank you, listen up during your training. Thank you very much. Okay, sorry that we interrupted you, so.
It's a pleasure to be here, and my wife and two lovely daughters are looking forward to getting out of the 150 degree Palm Springs heat and enjoying the great northwest and beautiful country.
Tell them to bring a little sunshine with them, though.
Uh, you get a lot of sunshine down there, just a little redone, 150 is pretty much good.
Well, you done this.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we'll move along to citizen comments, and first we have our elevator director, Maureen Cole.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that on Thursday evening, September 16th, the Oregon City Public Library will be having its first adult program in a very long time. We are now located at the Carnegie Center, and we will have the new Oregon poet laureate, who is Paulina Peterson, and she will be coming at 7:00 after the library is closed, so that we can just enjoy the lovely ambiance of the Carnegie Center and poetry that evening. Get real lucky, I might even bring a few snacks. So, I will remind you again at our next City Commission meeting, but please, you join us on the evening of September 16th.
Okay, September 16th. Next, we have Karen Mori, and we'll come up with Catty Holmes. As they're coming forward, for those of you that are new to our process, the citizen comment is a time when citizens may speak to us on eight lines that are not on the agenda, and we have a three-minute timeout, and you can self-monitor right up here. And when you come to the microphone, please give your name, the city, and who you reside.
Karen Mori, I live outside the city of Oregon City, and I'm here on behalf of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce to say thank you to the city of Oregon City for this important Sunday for the Antique Fair. I want to especially thank Public Works, Matt Paulson, Dan Ayers, Fran Schaper, and not last, but not least, John Lewis. Dan was incredibly helpful, and we enjoyed working with Public Works as we go through all the steps we're in a bed like this. Also, code enforcement, Nancy Bush and her team, officers, active reserve officers, Jason Thompson and Dave Byerly from the Oregon City Police Department helped my son keep traffic at Bay at 7th and Railroad and did a lovely job.
Commissioner Neely, who was out not only Sunday all day, or most of the day with us, but all Saturday helping Mark, he was there on the street with us at 2:15 in the morning on Sunday.
I was there at 2:00.
He was on the street at 2:00 a.m. I'm just thrilled with his songs yet again. Commissioner West, who helped count the crowd. I also noticed that Commissioner Nacita was scooping up snow cones handily for the McLaughlin Neighborhood, and Commissioner Smith was handily spending money with our vendors. We once again had the Oregon City Evangelical Church youth groups help us, the senior high kids helped in the morning. In the afternoon, the middle school and junior high kids, those kids worked so hard, the city was cleaner at the end of the day on Sunday than I have ever seen it. Those children were not going to leave a speck of popcorn on the street. This year, we had an interesting adjustment to make in spaces. We had open businesses on Main Street who wanted access to their front doors. I've received some comments that there seemed to be large, open spaces, while they were for Caulfield House, Wyndona Studios, New Familia, the New Minute Mart, the Pioneer Pub, and Bush Furniture, all of whom were open for business and gained a great deal from foot traffic. We'd also like to thank Andy Bush and Susan Perry, who brought classic cars to the Antique Fair, both for the enjoyment of the shockers, and also to promote the upcoming cruise in on September 11th. We clicked most of the crowd, but we had to do a little estimating. We think we had approximately 7,000 people in attendance. From surveys, a third of them were from Oregon City, a third were from Clackamas County, and a third were from outside of Clackamas County. And when we do our exit report for OCCT, we will definitely be tooting our trumpet that we have done our part for tourism in Oregon City. And I personally would like to thank the staff at the Oregon City Chamber, Amber, Julie, and Irma, who makes this all possible. Boy, you've got that right, and that three minutes, that was perfect. Thank you for that wonderful venue.
Hi, Kathy Hogan. I can't, it was stalking, it's been working all year. He actually didn't give your residency. I live outside the city. And we are at the Taste of Clackamas coming up again on December 9th, 6:00 p.m. At the Happy Center, they have, it's going to be $10, because it's worth it. And we have 10 different restaurants donating food again, and it is a wonderful, in fact, I tried to get two more shrimp last year, but they were all gone. There's such good shrimp from the restaurant, now you just have to go come and taste them, and then go to that restaurant. And we are filling and getting ready, we are way ahead of the beginning, we've been having workshops, we've been teaching people how to build stockings, and we already have 3,000 stocks already made, so we have probably, maybe 800, I think, some there, I'm working in the workshop, but when you give out 2,600, we still have a lot to go, so just wanted to let everybody know. Do, December 9th, come to the Taste of Clackamas. It's a fundraising first, it's a big one, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that ringing phone is a good reminder for everyone to put their phones on silent inside City Hall. Thank you. The next, the last card we have is for Kathy Rock.
Kathy Rock, Oregon City, Oregon City. And I just wanted to let everybody know, if you're not going to listen to poetry on September 16th, we want to go. At the Southern Neighborhood, there's going to be a meeting, or informative meeting, the DAMI will be there, which is the State Department of Geology and Minerals, and they're going to be speaking about rockslide hazards in the Oregon City area, specifically the Waterboard Park site. And so, I'm not sure if James Roddy will be there, but Bill Burns will be there to speak about that and take questions. So it'll be 7:00, Southern Neighborhood, who meets at the Methodist Church.
September 16th. Thank you. That's all the speakers that we have for citizen comment, so we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda or any other item that needs to be reordered this evening? Okay, then we will take the agenda in the order in which it appears. First, we will begin with other general business. We have the first item to consider, a permanent obstruction in right-of-way. It's a permit for the Atkins Memorial Church, which is continuation from our discussion on August 18th. And I believe that also is, there is a continuation of a conflict of interest by the Rocky City. I probably need to declare, I just need to declare it as a matter of form, so.
I am an employee of Atkins and Church, so therefore I will be not participating in this decision.
Thank you. Okay, who is taking this for the staff report? Ms. Prentice, Public Works Director, and City Engineer.
And it was, it was represented by the commission that the neighbors, the general, who contacted to make sure that they were aware of the permit request being made. And so the church did go ahead and send out letters, noticing them, noticing people within 100 feet that this would be for, this would be before the city commission at this meeting, so if they had any testimony to share with you, please. We also explained the permit, the purpose of the permit, and provided a copy of a drawing. And so it was pretty straight, pretty clear about what was going on. And so, nothing's really changed from our perspective, the technical difficulties related to the city commission name. One thing I wanted to note is that in, going back to the code, we're making sure everything was specific with the code, and we go out to the city commission, needs to approve these permits with a resolution. And so we've attached a resolution to our package tonight, and I'm sure they're not providing that at last year, so we said we'll release very often, and we just have the review details of where this is the process. So the resolution will be checked as well, and if there are any questions, I think I can answer them, I don't know, to the people in the audience on stage.
Okay, we have a resolution 1023 before us, and as was requested at the last meeting, if there are those who have come prepared to testify on that this evening, please come forward. I don't...
Greg Stoltz.
Okay, Greg Stoltz, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Greg Stoltz, I'm a resident of Oregon City. I actually spoke at the previous meeting on this topic. I'm the school board president for Oregon City Preschool. I just wanted to reiterate that we are in support of this request, and again, this is an issue that we'd like to get resolved quickly, because school is starting in about a week and a half, and I just want to make myself available if there are any questions. There were some questions last time, so if anything comes up for me, I'm available.
Okay, so I already heard a question. Commissioner West.
I don't know if I could ask you a last stat.
A question?
So, compared to last time, is the fence in this exact same location, or do I read this as a foot minimum that you set it back into the grass?
This is the exact same location, it was the last meeting.
So is it right up to the edge of the grass, or is it put in?
Oh, well. Mayor Norris, excuse me, but I wanted to mention that we did receive a letter from Kimberly Walsh, and she was not able to be here today, so I wanted to just make mention that she sent in a letter of support for the...
Thank you. Okay, any questions? So thank you very much, appreciate coming up. So, we have a motion from...
It's just a motion of a revocable... This applies, you're, in the sense that we, this is going to be there a long time, but it applies to the public interest that we could...
Commissioner Neely, this actually does have a termination date on it as well, it's two years early, so we hope to start this quickly.
Okay, thank you. Now, do you have a motion, please?
Okay, I will move for a... I'll move to approve the pending revocable permit obstruction and the right-of-way permit, permit number right-of-way 10-0048, for the placement of fences in the Atkins and Memorial Church expansion project.
It's the resolution. Yeah, actually, resolution 1023, that's it. Why don't you add that on to motion?
Okay, in resolution number 1023.
So, moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. The resolution, may I have the second? Same then, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
What?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? I'm sorry. Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for a zero. Okay, we'll move on to the next slide, I'm going to just say, a biggie. This is an item that has come to us from Metro, it's the reveal of the potential urban growth boundary expansion areas for Oregon City. As we talked about several times, the Metro's CEO, Mike Lorden, has issued a report after the urban rural reserves process. It's in volume one and volume two, we all had a chance to memorize. And as I mentioned, it brings the last report from M-PAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee, the region is going to be reviewing that report, and particularly, looking at the area, the study areas in light of a possible urban growth expansion next year. Originally, there were three areas surrounding Oregon City that were on that potential list. In the CEO's report, there remains just one area, which is labeled as the Maple Lane Expansion. Along with that, the Metro Council determined that it would hold the discussion open in case there, and it would be a responsibility of local government, such as our city, if there were citizens in this, in the urban growth, in the UGB, outside the UGB, that wish to become part of the urban growth boundary expansion, or study area, that we could also add that. So, tonight is that first... So, um, tonight is that first opportunity for citizens who have requests like that to put a press on the table. So to kind of review where the actions are, now I'll turn over to Tony, who's provided us with this very in-depth, um, group of documents to help, really help us make this information. We have, um, um, several halves we can take. We can, uh, look at that Maple Lane expansion area, decide whether we want to keep that as a possible expansion area or not. And I think all along, we, we, we've said that we have plenty of, uh, residential growth expansion room till the further twenty years. And it reminds us all that the next urban growth expansion opportunity is in five years. So that's one, one set. And then, um, then we do have, we have two or one now application. We now have two applications from property owners. One's called the Kmetic family application, and the other one is the Vander Mullen Johnson.
Correct.
Okay, there are those, those two who have asked for consideration. So we may, uh, choose to, uh, absolutely study and look at by Metro or not. So, and then the third thing is that because there is a public comment period by Metro that's going to do until September thirtieth?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty, twenty-seven. We could hold the record open for public comment on whatever actions, I guess, that, that we take tonight. So we have a, a, a bundle of decisions that we need to do, but the time is pretty close upon us to make those, those decisions. So to walk us through some of those summaries of, of the work, um, I'll turn that over to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Evening Commissioners. Um, so you received my, um, hopefully you received my memorandum from August twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. We received the day before, um, on the twenty-fourth, we received a request from the Kmetic family and their representatives to consider their twenty acres that are located in the Newell Creek Urban Reserve Area. The property is just north, takes access from Davis Road. Um, approximately eighty acres of that is potentially developable. The remaining twelve, um, um, is below a, a steep slope entering into the Abernathy, uh, Riparian area and flood zone. Um, down in that area, there are also some small creeks that, uh, tributaries to Abernathy do that do cross part of that property. And I guess what we have here is that, um, if there is a recommendation from the commission that they would like Metro to consider this property for a U G B expansion area, we need to have support from the, the commission, uh, representing the local jurisdiction, and we need to have that to Metro by this Friday, uh, September third. I will, I'll, I'll come back and talk a little bit more about the Kmetic family's application, um, in a second. Um, today, we received a request from, uh, the Vander Mullen and Mr. Johnson. Their properties are in what are being called the Beaver Creek Bluff area. So this is an urban reserve that the, that the commission reviewed and that we did include in our, um, urban reserve areas. When Metro was beginning to look at areas to consider for U G B expansion, they called the local jurisdictions and asked if they had any areas they wanted them to look at. Um, I did, uh, forward this property as a potential candidate that the commission may consider. And that was the only one that I forwarded to, to Metro. So they did include the Metro, the Beaver Creek Bluff area in their initial analysis. Initially, they looked at eight thousand acres. And so we had originally, um, I'm drawing a blank. I think we brought, we had created twenty-eight thousand acres of urban reserve areas. They identified eight thousand acres to look at, a urban reserve area to look at, um, in this study. And then they narrowed it down, and this, um, the Beaver Creek Bluff area did not make the COO cut uh, for an area that they would recommend. So, that being said, I think it's a little bit different than the Kmetic family request in that it's already in the record. Um, Metro had already looked at it, so it's not a new land, a new area. So I don't believe we have to have a recommendation on that property by September third. I think that would fall under the public comments section, of which the commission could forward public comments. If they so decided that they would like, um, that area to be a U G B expansion area, we could enter that into the record and ask the Metro Council to reconsider the COO report and add that as a U G B area for expansion. So, uh, we have some different timelines going on right here, which is a little confusing, but, um.
You see your own report, was it?
I'm sorry?
You referred to the report by.
Uh, the chief operating officer for Metro, the, the report that identified Maple Lane Urban Reserve Area, that is a candidate area. I'm sorry.
I think it was about August tenth or something.
So I, um, considering back to the Kmetic family property, I've included in, in your packet, um, identification of where the property is and where water and sewer is located. The nearest, uh, sewer line is at the intersection of Davis and Trillium. Uh, from there, the property slopes, uh, down to, at the northeastern corner of the property of approximately a seventy-foot, um, drop. So you would either need to provide a pump station to get, uh, sanitary back up to where the existing sanitary sewer line, or there's an existing line that came out of the back of Trillium Park Estate, which is directly south of the Kmetic family property. And that extends down the slope to the, to the trunk line in Highway two thirteen that then runs out. You know, there is the potential, without doing a lot of analysis and going to ODA and looking at it, uh, it is feasible to run across there. If, if it's legally possible, that would be another issue that we would have to address. Also because of existing terrain around there, what we're using trying to do with water lines is what we call loop them, so that you don't have a long dead-end line, uh, to improve water quality. Um, because of existing topography streams and whatnot in there, looping is difficult. And also because of that same topography and whatnot, providing a, a connected grid local street in this area, uh, is, yeah, very unrealistic. Uh, you're pretty much looking at access via Davis Road instead of preliminary look at it. The hard part with this is that, um, we don't have a comprehensive plan designation since this is outside of our U G B, so we don't know what the densities would be. Uh, the assumption is, and the property owner can certainly come in and request something different, but right now, we're doing an expansion for residential. Um, so if this property was brought in, um, when we make the argument that it should be for residential use, since that's the need that it's needing. Um, I provided a graph in the, in your package showing, uh, the difference, total number of units that could be provided, assuming, um, that there actually were eight acres that were developable, um, that ranges from an R three-five zone of approximately eighty units, uh, all the way to an R eight zone, which could be approximately thirty-five units on those eight acres. The other issue is that there would be one property remaining, and, uh, I'm not sure if it got put into your packet, uh, the Wayland property, which would be directly to the rest of this, that would be the last piece remaining. Um, if you did not bring that in as well, you kind of end up with, um, uh, a, a U G B island, um, I guess you could call it, that's in the urban reserve. Um, but we did receive a, a letter from the, from, I'm sorry, Mr. Lorden indicating, um, a request to consider his property as well. Um, I have not had a chance to review that property, just based on the timing of when this information is being submitted to us. So would you like to go through, I know you have representative and the Kmetic family here for, to, to speak to this subject. Would you like me to continue on to the other properties and wrap mine up and come back for questions later, or would you like to do these separately?
I think it would be good to have an overview of, of all of it, so that we understand what the big picture is, and then come back and ask questions about, about the individual parcels.
And I, and I, I, I contemplated that when I put this report together, because potentially your decision on the policy impacts your decision on these two applications. So once again, we had the, the Johnson Vander Mullen property request, um, as well before you tonight. Um, I believe that if this is something you wish to investigate, we could certainly talk about it tonight. Um, I received it a, a little bit after three o'clock this afternoon. Uh, we've reviewed the property. It's in our, in our urban reserve area. I can certainly provide more information at the next meeting. I believe we have until the twenty-seventh to actually provide comments on this, since it was already in, uh, the report and looked at by Metro. So I would then continue on to the, uh, growth management assessment, and, and, um, working with Metro, both elected officials and staff throughout the region, we identified and have been working on what is going to be the housing need, uh, residential housing need, uh, in the region. We also looked at commercial, industrial, and other areas as well. So it was determined that the urban growth report identified a need of approximately twenty-seven thousand to a hundred and five thousand additional units within the region, uh, are needed. And then to, since it's such a large range, it was, um, divided up into thirds, and it was decided that the middle third should be the target that we aim at, which provides a, uh, range of need of approximately forty-four thousand, sixty-two thousand housing units. Metro then went through and identified efficiencies, or what they're identifying them as, uh, whether it be pub zonings that have occurred throughout the region in certain areas, changes to code, uh, for certain jurisdictions that increase its densities or Floraia ratios, or, or leads to better utilization of the existing land, residential land that's inside the U G B or inside of a city limit. They've looked at, and they've been studying, and, um, infill rates are trending higher, so they upped the infill rate in the reutilization of underserved, underdeveloped lands. And so through those efficiencies that they've identified in the urban growth report, um, they've come up with an additional thirty-two thousand dwelling units approximately that, um, are expected to be developed within the next twenty years, within the existing urban growth boundary. So what that gives you is that, that, that exceeds the minimum that was identified. We identified twenty-seven hu- thousand housing units as the minimum that was needed. So they've identified through efficiencies thirty-two thousand that are going to occur. Now you have the recommendation of the urban growth report that identified the middle third as the need that we should be shooting for. So that means we need to get to forty-four thousand to hit that minimum, so we're short approximately twelve thousand housing units. The assessment and the work that goes into creating the urban growth report and the urban growth assessment is a multiple-year project. So some of the questions that the commission, that the Metro Commission has identified that local jurisdictions can provide public comment on include, were the assumptions that we made over two years ago, are they still accurate? Um, are the, are the, what we were projecting for how quickly, um, land was being developed, you know, should we still consider those, knowing what we've just gone through in the last two years and the slowdown that we've, that we've seen? And is that a reason to, to reassess that and maybe ju- and, and take a timeout? We've identified thirty-two thousand additional housing units. Is that sufficient, knowing that we will be back in five years, or look at this again? So I've provided you bullet points. We'll tell you the pros and cons. Um, as you're well aware, we've done Beaver Creek, um, concept plan. We've done the, uh, Park Place concept plan. When we bring a, a property into the urban growth boundary, the, the, the planning process that goes into this takes multiple years. So you have multiple years to come up with a concept plan. You then have to go through the annexation, which takes a year. Uh, if that's successful, you then need to come in and go through the entitlement process and the land use process, and then you're into development. And you're realistically looking at, you know, five, seven, ten years for land that we're talking about right now that we're going to bring into the U G B. So there's, there's a, there's a considerable lag associated with that. Um, you've also got, as recommended by the, by Metro, was to consider the approximately five hundred and, uh, thirty-some acres of the Maple Lane Urban Reserve Area. This area is directly north of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Area, which was brought into the U G B in two thousand and two and two thousand and four. Uh, you do have some, uh, ability to maximize in- infrastructure that's going to be provided, um, in that area as a benefit for potentially considering that area if, if you so choose. Um, I've also laid out some of the growth trends that we've seen. We've seen a significant drop-off in building permit applications, building permits being requested. Um, we also have, um, conservatively, three hundred and fifty lots that have been through the planning cru- process, that have been approved, have been platted. So what that means is that the roads are in, sewers in, water's in, the lots are legal, you can go sell them tomorrow, they just haven't been built on.
Yeah, three seventy-five in here.
I'm sorry, three seventy-five. I should read my notes. Uh, through the COB approval, we have an additional hundred and eighty, um, apartments, uh, I'm sorry, hundred and eighty condominiums to two hundred and sixteen apartments. We just, the, the Crackus County Housing Authority just went through the planning commission on Monday night. They received preliminary approval on their master plan, which could be looking at an additional two hundred units um, above what's currently constructed up on Holcombe, for a total of three hundred. So we have quite a bit of capacity that's actually ready to be built on right now, or will be sold already very, very quickly. I think it's also important to point out that between two thousand and one and two thousand and seven, we, we averaged about two hundred and forty-seven single-family permits per year. We're trending over the last three years approximately one hundred. And to be honest, uh, I, I think we are still on the way down or near bottom at this point. Um, we saw an increase at the beginning of this year due to the first-time homebuyer credit that was out there. Since that credit has gone away, we've actually seen a, a noticeable decline in single-family residential housing permit requests. Um, we've also issued three new lots, um, and, um, through the land use process. With that, um, we've also identified that Beaver Creek Concept Plan has been a field to lube. Um, that needs to be addressed before any of those lands can be, can be developed. We have the Park Place Concept Plan that was approved. Uh, we've been unsuccessful in any annexations of any of those properties in that area, and we have not completed, have not started the South End Concept Plan to date, um, representing, um, by Metro, estimates, uh, one thousand eight hundred and fifty housing units that are expected to be built in those concept plan areas and over the next twenty years planning horizon. I think from my standpoint, my recommendation, um, is that we have the needs. We brought in nine hundred and fifty acres through the last two U G B expansion processes. We need to get those lands moving forward. Uh, I'm not sure it's the appropriate time, um, for U G B expansion in Oregon City. Um, I'd also like to point out that through this process, uh, Metro is also, um, we've been working with Metro to address the, uh, land use port of appeals remand to the city and Metro concerning the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Area. Metro has, was called their twenty forty design type map, and it identifies very broad, general, um, land use categories. And in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Area, it was, it was designated Title Four, which is for industrial and employment lands. So we went through the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, and many of you on the commission were part of that process, and, and we have, we have, we have competing com- comprehensive, organically comprehensive plan policies, which identify how that land should be used. We had a Metro design type, um, we had extensive citizen, citizen involvement to come up with a plan that, um, although one of the members on that committee could support. And so we've been working with Metro to amend the Title Four map to reflect what the Beaver Creek Concept Plan envisioned. So that would mean a, a deduction in the Title Four designated lands in the Beaver Creek area to address the reason for remand from the land use port of appeals. So that is also in this, this report that's being put forward and recommended, uh, to Metro. There's also, um, some other recommendations that deal with, um, expanding the U G B to include three hundred and ten acres for, um, industrial capacity north of Hillsborough. And that would require that the parcels are the, are the large parcels, the fifty-plus acres that, um, the Metro has been, uh, moving towards for large industrial, large employment center, um, make sure those types of parcels of that size are available in, in, within the region for job production. There's also changes to the regional framework plan, which is similar comprehensive plan for the Metro, uh, council. Uh, it's, it's not in violation of the local jurisdiction. It's more their vision, their, their policies that they follow. And then, um, some minor changes to the functional plan, and the functional plan is with the local jurisdiction. That's what we go read. We see what we need to comply with to be compliant with the regional, uh, requirements. So. Lot of information. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions now to help you through it, or wait for the presentations. I will at no. Uh, we did notice this. We, we ended up sending out about three hundred and seventy, um, notices at tonight's hearing. Uh, we focused on around the Maple Lane area and around the Kmetic property, um, to provide folks, um, a link, the agenda tonight, when it would be happening. I wrote them a letter indicating what, what was going on. Um, so if there are folks who are here tonight, uh, that, I want to give them a chance to, uh, to speak as well.
Okay, uh, great. Would you like to go into the public hearing, or, or go, compare from both and come to speak? Okay, um, if you come, prepare to speak this evening, we have comment cards back in the corner, so it'd be good probably have you filled those out. Um, many of Vander Mullen, uh, the, the two properties, I'll, I'll, I'll call up, but there are those that either favor or oppose or have other information. or have other information, I would ask you, please fill out those cards. Okay, one is for the Kinetic properties. So if those representatives would like to come forward and, or are you able to keep your comments to three minutes?
I, I will definitely try, okay?
Or I suppose it depends on whether I can work this meeting here. Okay, why don't, we will, Nancy, can you give five, ten minutes? Are you ready?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. You're at her house, and so we live, or you know, the city where she lives, and then go ahead.
Okay, I'm Pam Roderick, I am with TDR and Associates, representing the Kinetic brothers and family. And I live at seventeen oh seven Northeast Fifty-Second, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two one three. And I, I am happy to say that I, I kind of stumbled into this presentation by an odd, a half a sense. My, my good friend Mark Greenlight was working on this property, and he passed away from a heart attack. And he was my assistant planner when I was planning Director of the City of Sandy. So Matt Greenlight, his stand-in is Tom here tonight. And Matt had a complex to go to, but that's how I'm tied to this property. And I have worked with a Kinetic family here for the past two, three years in trying to build this board. The Kinetic property actually is quite unique in that it is located right within a quarter mile of the Willamette Falls Hospital. Let me see if I can find the right.
No, property is falling off.
Yes. Problems. Let me see if I can pull this thing up. Property, if you can follow this, is, is located right off of Davis Street. There are actually four tax law properties that identify this one parcel. It is separated by session maps, but it has never been partitioned into separate properties. So there's one parcel containing twenty-plus acres. The usable area for development is right off of Davis Street. And it is adjacent to MU E, which is Misused Employment. It was the Willamette Falls Hospital that we're approached previously, and they were very interested in the possible use of this property, even though it has been identified by Tony and others as possible residential. There are, there's a capacity there, or potential there, where employment might occur. And the, the remainder of the property actually falls to the north into the Abernacque Creek Basin. And you can see it, it does drop a tremendous amount. It actually creates a beautiful amphitheater down into the Abernacque Resilient Road area. It's about four acres of flat land that floods on a regular basis, but it is beautiful bottom land and is earmarked by the Kinetic family as being sold to Metro. And the idea of working with the Native American community and creating a ceremonial space. And Anne is also an elder for, in the Portland area, I'm part Iroquois. I work with NEA. I brought Janita and Frye, who is a coordinator, to the site. We hiked it on Friday. And she was very excited about the potential of creating a space there that could be for certain ceremonies for the native community. One of the top issues for that, for NEA, which actually represents so many Native American people in the Portland metro area, it makes up the ninth largest tribe, if you counted the population in the United States. The ninth largest tribe represented by this group. And they are, have spoken out with Nick Fish and others in Portland, asking for new parks to be named, at least for some of the cultural history of the Native American people. And Nick Fish actually, Commissioner Fish, included the drumming ceremony at the last occasion, but it was a little bit too soon to consider Native American naming. But this may be a great opportunity for both, the Oregon City, which actually was a huge encampment before settlers came here, because of course it's a great place to settle. And, and an opportunity to kind of bridge the educational differences. The upper end, however, is only eight acres of the twenty plus. And it, it actually does have an opportunity to have a looping system with Penn Lane. If you look at the terrain, I'm not sure if the cursor will do it. But I, in walking the side, there's one house in this vicinity. And you can actually work along the topo line and bring a second road or even a looping system into this and make it not just a dead-end waterline, and possibly a one-way road. There is enough space between the existing structures to put in a twenty-foot roadway. It could be one-way, it could be two-way, but I know about fire trucks. So that would have to be determined. What I do recommend, though, is we, we're currently right within a quarter mile stone throw away from one of the commercial nodes for the city. This is, this is actually a supportive node for the regional center. And with that, there's an opportunity for, you know, assisted living within walking distance of medical facilities. All sorts of different uses that our growing and aging population will need. And it within urban, an urban center. So I'm saying maybe expand the master plan that is currently being done by Willamette Falls Providence, and say, include this in your study and say, what is the highest and best use before the annexation takes place? And consider it as a, an opportunity for some of the misused and higher density or affordable housing that you will need instead of just single-family, that maybe often hinting at not accessible to the parent.
Okay, I think, I think they don't have exact timing here, so it's a bit, they were close, probably close to five minutes. We didn't do a five minute, right? I was looking, so I didn't clock it there. Anyway, if you could, if you could summarize, I think, I think we're over, but we, we're pretty far. So I apologize. I'm sorry. I'll comment your fault.
I did hand you additional documents. And in that, it does show this property in tier two for the Metro lands that they want to purchase. And the lady who is in charge of the purchasing is on vacation. So I couldn't get a letter from her. But the adjacent properties right across two thirteen happen through this line of Metro. And in fact, all of the, as Tony pointed out, all the other properties in this cul-de-sac area are owned by either ODOT, Metro, or Mr. Vern Weldon. And his property actually is adjacent to this right here in the corner.
Is there anything to add?
Well, I, I just would invite anybody that's involved in considering this matter to actually visit this site. It is a very unique piece of property. And I think this is an opportunity to make the choice, keeping this open for renewal. And it, it could be a boon financially to the city too, if we move in that direction of a higher and better use than residential.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, first, let's, do we have any people who are prepared to speak, either in support or opposition to this? If so, be simple. I don't have you. Yes, that's great.
Good game. I'll make the third brief. My name is Jack, although I live at, on Trojan Park Drive in Beckham Hospital. I'm part of the homeowners association in Beckham Hospital, the Trojan Park Homestead Association. And we've had a lot of dialogue at the hospital over the years on development and master plans and so forth. And in fact, you saw an appeal submitted on some issues about a year ago with Willamette Falls Hospital, in which our association was involved, and also the Manglaugon Bigfoot Association. I just, I just want to briefly comment that if there's going to be the development or proposed development or expansion of the urban growth boundary in this area, is that I would ask you to consider a little bit of citizen involvement, of people that live in this area or right next door. We've had a lot of issues in terms of transportation and so forth in the area. We were advised by the hospital fairly recently that you would be not part of their master plan planning process, but we'd be advised of how that is developed as recently as this year. I heard that process wasn't having even started yet because there's going to be a lot of amendments to the things that we were considering previously. So I simply encourage you not to consider this at this time, so that we can involve our neighbors a little bit more in what's going to be happening out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment on the Kinetic property?
Hello, my name is Catherine Marie Courts, and I'm out, living outside of the city. And I'm living actually in Beaverton, but I would like to just speak in the support of the Native American aspect on this. At one time, these were tribal lands. And being a member of the Walker River Paiute tribe, I believe in this local area, there is only one place currently, Leutetanima area. And being a part of the End of the Oregon Trail, I think it's really something that somebody could consider. And once again, being of the tribal lands, land uses got a lot to do with part of the nature and the aesthetic beauty. I believe it's very important, at least take some deep consideration because of the native people. And if you are familiar with the Native and Frye, they do represent quite a few points of view from the native community, all in a tribal. Because a lot of people come from different areas, to live in Oregon, Oregon City as well. I used to actually live here in Oregon City for five years, which I really, really loved. And because I can imagine back in the day when they used the fish and whatnot, because I'm a fish eater. But again, as a Native American, I just think that it would be important and for you to at least put some consideration into it without just thinking, oh, we don't have time, we don't have room, we don't have, you know, funding and whatnot. Because currently at our Indian reservations, we live with almost zero funding. We live with zero healthcare, we live with zero transportation, and our poverty level, except it does, it is very high. So it could just be a window of opportunity to at least understand some different, maybe bridge some gaps, or something that maybe would be a possibility, at least in the future. And so I think it'd be a time.
I just, I have a question. The, the, the Andersons, of the Native Americans in Michigan, Mary, how would they, how would they be best served by moving into the urban growth boundary?
That right now, I would only be able to come from the spiritual, traditional, contemporary, traditional aspect. I would only be able to say because of the natural, the aspect of nature, okay? And because we as a people, we live with a thing called a medicine wheel philosophy. It helps our physical, mental, spiritual, and emotional be a balance. Many people are suffering from depression, blood pressure, et cetera, et cetera, from a lot of different things. And if we just keep getting so many things that are going on without having a place for replenishing our energy, as such as when I hear some of the waterfalls, I personally have not been up to the area, which I may look into because of the beauty of what I'm hearing and what this gentleman right here has said, for somebody to come up and learn. But again, I just think to consider it as just another portion, and not maybe just all policy procedure and what we can't do, but what can we see through a window of opportunity. Thank you.
My name is Sean Deane, and I live in Oregon City. And developed the property just in the office of this property. I'd make that a comment on the person who just spoke. Still around here at the meetings at, in Salem, not very long ago, where they were going to rewrite some of the land use regulations specifically because of a law called the Lupa, as well as institutionalized and religious uses of land. But the proposed solution to the problem that was developed in that case is a, is a recommendation that is now not yet gone through the process, but that would, that would make it impossible for the land to be grown for the kind of assemblies that she was suggesting, if the land is not within the city. That's confusing, we all know. But if the land is within three miles of the urban growth boundary, under the presently contemplated change to the statute, LCTC, will make it impossible for us to have assemblies within three miles of an urban growth boundary, except for very concentrated in the thing. So I don't think people were aware of that when, when she was talking. I would, I would be in favor of considering what to do with this property. I have been out there, lived there for, for years. And I've developed all of the, of the Trojan Park state properties out there. And there's all my other kids, and now going on forty-seven grandkids. I thoroughly enjoy the area. I understand that nothing that happens here, or in, or under consideration of what that will even be put into the urban growth boundary, determine what can be done on it. Has to be done in a different environment, under different circumstances. I would be careful, and I should just, having a lot of concerns expressed about what would be done on it, which is not really what you're considering here. Just wanted to say, I've lost that land for a long time. I think it's appropriate for it to be used for something. I don't think it can be used for hardening anything the way it is now. That's my comments.
Thank you. Any further comments on the Kinetic property? Can I just move to the other property, Vandermullen and Johnson, look like to come forward?
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Bill Vandermullen, two zero zero one State, South White Lane, Oregon City.
All you need to say is, what do you live in, is that, what city you live in, or what county? So I'm going to give you a break. Thank you.
I'm Vern Johnson, I live in Oregon City.
We're bringing this to your attention this evening. Most of you have been involved with this already. We did not receive any notice regarding that this was going to be on the agenda. So my apologies for the, to Tony and to the hall members present for the, the late notice and the late application. However, all the things that regarded this land that brought it into the urban reserve still stand as reasons to bring it into the, the now considered urban growth expansion. And those being that this land was part of Area Twenty-Nine in nineteen ninety-six in the initial look at the properties when they filed for the urban reserve at that time. And it was thrown out as, the whole thing was thrown out through the lawsuit over Washington County. But at that point in time, it was following the natural curves of the geography there to fill out the land towards, for Oregon City. Since then, it, it was lopped into what was called Area Thirty-One and sort of segmented out as an island of buildable land that was different from the rest of Area Thirty-One. And in this process of bringing it into the urban reserve, we're, we're trying to correct that and look at what is the characteristics of this land and find the appropriate use for it. In this case, it was land that was non-productive agriculturally. Joy-stony roam, it meant that it had boulders either the size of basketball or a full swagging. Very difficult to farm and, and no irrigation for, for farming. On the other hand, it's right on level, adjacent to the city limits and the urban growth boundary. The city utilities are on level for expansion right at the borders of these properties. It would not require any pumps for sewer expansion. It's a low cost to the city for an expansion of the residential tax base. As I've said before, it fills out the property to the natural geographic curves there. And beyond that, it provides natural green space for recreation and to all citizens of the Oregon City community. Perhaps with the properties leaking up, creating a walking trail that could go all the way from Central Point Road to, to the college and back. The final point that I'd like to make is that all members, all landowners in this group support this expansion at this time. And I'm making the request, right now speaking with Vern and I, for... And I'm making the request right now, speaking with Vern and I, for some of the ones who couldn't be here.
How many acres total?
There's 227 acres listed total on the three plus. I'm only in the western group, the western block. That would be less than 120, 130 acres with about 80 or so of their rolls off. And those are rough estimates because the numbers that I have are from the whole group, 227 with 124 acres.
Okay. Your request though can only be for your property, is that right?
So we're, we're the western.
Okay, so are we clear about what the request is?
I think we need to talk about it, yes. I mean, tonight, we, you know, we received the letter this afternoon. Part of the property. We, Metro studied, we were correct, 227 acres is what the Beaver Creek block area is being called and identified as. And that would be the total area out there. We certainly have that discussion of recommend all of it, part of it. And I guess as we discussed tonight, we can flesh that up.
Okay, just so we have kind of an understanding about that.
Right, I'm only speaking for, you know, our properties as a group, the 90 plus, 120 plus acres that were in the western.
The western sector. Okay. If you recall, these are the three Gs from the bottom of the map.
These specific properties are closest are very aligned with the central point of the road.
Okay, go ahead.
Just as a self clarification, we, we're kind of unique in that there's three separate parcels that are separated by from a half mile to a quarter mile as the crow flies across the canyon. We don't know very much about the owners or their wishes on the, of the eastern or the central block areas. But just for this purpose, we tried to lump it together in a lump that Metro has drawn as the three G is the designation Metro has on these three blocks. And I think, so we have no objections to the others joining in if it comes, you know, if it comes in as one group for the three blocks. Or if at some point it's determined that the other two groups don't want to come in, then we would be speaking more specific about our own properties.
Are you finished then?
Yep.
Okay, any more questions or any questions? Okay, thank you. Now either wish to seek the support of or question the gasey properties?
Kathy Holden, I live outside the city limits across from their properties. I guess I have a concern that they would like to lump some other properties. And I just said that those people don't know about that. So that it disturbed me for those people to the southeast, I guess you might call it. And it is those properties on the map there, the lavender ones. And I have a problem if they're going, when you go around, go down Central Point and take the dam around and you learn that if you go to that road and the road could slush off and run off if it's not handled correctly. So if you look again, it should be a buffer so that that property isn't too close to the road. That's existing area that goes down Central Point because one piece, Payson, Mr. Payson Farm is right there. And sometimes some of the trees fall down into the roadway. I'm not saying it shouldn't be finished, I forget how much. Aaron Johnson has, if that's an acre or 20 acres block. And it is a boundary, but I would like it to be protected. I worry about a blind spot them coming out of a road if they're doing it. So you can't separate them, you can separate, but then you don't really address the issues that are really going to be created by it. The canyon is an issue to me, Little Beaver Creek is a big issue. The properties across the street, yeah, at one time wanted to be in. When you go down Parrish Road, there's Little Beaver Creek there. This winter, I saw a beaver had worked on a tree. There was a dam. Now those are gone because they've been cut down and the dam is gone. People have been eating around that Little Beaver Creek. Right now it's dry, yes, but during the winter, there's water. So I think some of it, it should be looked at and investigated and make sure how much of it is appropriate. Maybe not all of it, some of it is probably, but I would be concerned that was, if it's not looked at appropriately, it could be problems.
Thank you. Thank you. Further speakers on this one? Tom, are you on this topic? Okay, Tom O'Brien.
O'Brien, resident of Oregon City. I tried to do my homework in preparation for tonight's meeting and reviewed all of the documents that had been furnished by Tony for our CIC members. And I'm a little bit confused at this point and I'm hoping maybe Tony or someone else can clarify things for me a little bit. The map that is put out by Metro for the three G urban area shows the various parcels we're discussing. But then Exhibit Five of the Urban Reserve recommendations, the numbers that I am hearing mentioned don't correspond to these items on here. I think we're probably talking U7. Is U7 identical to three G? Yes. So the numbers that we've got posted here under U7, give a gross increase of 253 for the whole cubang, with 166 net acres usable. Total units at eight minutes break are working up to 1,062 residences with 2.54 persons per unit, additional roughly 2,700 people in that area. If I'm understanding correct. Thank you.
If I could just add a piece of discussion in the place, they have here, it's forgotten. These parcels we talked about form, I think, the hard edge of our expansion. There's really no way, so it would really be the growth complete at the end.
If I could just make fun of it. Yes, so I had included Exhibit Five and Six in your, in your packet. And that was the analysis that the city did when we were reviewing the urban and rural reserve questions. So that's why you see the U7, the U8. At the time, the packet was created, we had only had the one request for the comedic family. So I did identify, you know, wish that fell into. And then we also had the Maple Lane, which we identified as U6 on that one. So, but yes, these were what we initially had done last year. So that, so could you give you some, some of the work that we've already gone through when we were considering where to put the urban reserve, where to put the rural reserve? And I think, I'm going back to, you know, when I'm, when we're looking at this and the commission helped to assist you with your policy decisions, you know, tried to lay out what the pros and cons were. And I'll just read it once again. And concerning the Maple Lane, it's very, it's very hard to justify to bring in 530 some acres at this point, in my, in my opinion. That doesn't, you know, if we walk through this and you think the policies are being met, you could certainly argue that because of how long it takes to bring these, these to urbanization and to provide those standards to those properties, it might be appropriate to start now. But when you weigh on, in my opinion, what I'm finding is that it may not be. But, you know, those policies are very, very broad and you have much to consider when you're looking at all those and what the long-term benefits and cons are to the city. Concerning the comedic family property. When we look, when we look at that property, realistically, it's a very small potential of additional housing units to be brought into the city. And not to get too caught up in process, but unfortunately, process is how we move these properties through. Right now, when we bring a property into UGB, we bring it in and then we do the concept plan, just as we did with Beaver Creek and, and we will do for Southland, we did for Park Place. After this year, the next time we go around and do UGB expansions again, we will have to have the concept plan in place first. And then you consider which lands to bring in. And that's, that's a significant change in that you are doing the community and public conversation about what this should look like out here before you bring it in. Whereas historically, you bring it in with this big picture, but, you know, do you have community support for that? It's hard to tell. And so, you know, as you've heard tonight, when I look at it, when I look at this UGB expansion, we're addressing residential lands. This property, if we zone it at our 3.5, you're looking at 80 units on it, on the eight acres. You've heard from the representative that they have other visions for this property. Employment, the region doesn't need employment land right now unless it's 50 acres or more. You don't need commercial land right now. So if that's really the vision, you know, maybe that should be addressed upfront so that everyone knows what the vision is in here. So that we're not going back to Metro and saying, yeah, we asked you to bring this in for residential, but now we want to do something else. So that would be the one caution I have. Once, on the other side of that is, it's animal. We're talking 80 units, plus or minus. In reality, that's a UGB map of them. And concerning the Vander Mullen and Johnson property, once again, coming, coming to us late, but we have looked at the properties. In the, one of the exhibits that I did provide to you, Metro, Metro went through and looked at both of these properties as we did at four. And, and their finding concerning these lands. And Metro, because of the limitations in funding that's available for transportation improvements, public improvements, water, sewer, pedestrian connectivity, bike lanes and whatnot, there's some focus on corridors, centers, main streets. And that's Metro's focus right now. And their finding, urbanization of Beaver Creek Plus analysis area will not contribute to the vision or purpose of the Oregon City Regional Center. The analysis area is too isolated from the center to support the need for more people or meet a higher level of activity. Okay, so that's why the COO did not recommend it. That was their, that was their finding after they looked at this area. We went and looked at it. We thought it was appropriate for other reasons, such as this is, for all intents and purposes, the, as far south as we're going to go here in the foreseeable future because of the topography. So while it may not contribute 20, 20 units per acre to a regional center, in our regional center, it is the end, if we're going to put urban services there, whether it be water, sanitary sewer, to utilize those remaining lands that are available. Once again, it's not a huge amount of land. So I can, I could certainly argue either way on this. But I, you know, I don't want to put you in, in the, you have to go one way or the other. That's just from what I'm seeing and based on the trends we're seeing in population and growth and development in the lands that we have available.
Do we have any? I'm sorry, do we have any other questions? Land that is already in our city limits, how many, how many, how many acres of buildable land we have in the Southland, Central Point?
Specifically note, I do, I can certainly have that for you.
You did an analysis of, of the whole infill. Okay.
I guess I kind of stepped in there before we saw if anybody else who wanted to speak in.
I'd like to finish all the speakers and I think we'll take a break before we have the discussion. We've been going for a long time. Has everyone spoken who wished to at this point? Okay, great. Let's take our break and come back at 8:30 and we end the session. Please, we have order. George Donovan. Sir, if you wish to continue to talk, could we ask you to step outside, thank you.
It's quite dark in the room, but.
We need to get on with our business this evening, so we're now back in session. Now's an opportunity for the commission to discuss our options and wishes with what you do with urban growth boundary expansion properties. So let's just begin that too. Mr. Aziza.
I have a couple of questions, I'm looking for Tony. On the lowland, the bottom land and the potential Native American use of that site, would the current zoning of the site under the county zoning permit that particular use of the site? Or do we know that?
Mr. Sullivan, you have a comment?
This relates, I think, to the comment that Mr. Bean raised. And it's the usual lawyer's answer of it depends. And I'll try to elaborate on that. If you're looking at an assembly once a quarter, once a year, it probably, the county would probably grant the permit, assuming some other fairly objective standards on that. If you're looking at it for Sundays or throughout the year, I think you have to find some other use designations, such as a church. And what Mr. Bean was talking about, because I was involved in one of these cases, was a church on prime farmland, which doesn't involve an expansion of an existing church, but the location of a new one. The rules, not the statute, not the rules prohibit that. So you have to use an exception to get that. If you're off prime farmland, you might be able to get a conditional use for. So, and this is organized, really given any time doing that. And I think that's what Mr. Bean was talking about. There was a case that came out of Jackson County about a year and a half ago in which the LCDC rule prohibiting a church on prime farmland was found unconstitutional by RUPA because it allowed for other places of public assembly that were not religious. And that violated the terms and provisions of the, of the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. LCDC then went back to redo the rule and the, Mr. Bean and I were in on that, giving advice to LCDC. And quite frankly, I went on sabbatical, so I don't know what happened after it. But that's an issue that's always out there with regard to religious gatherings on private land. You can do it once, once a quarter, maybe, once a year, certainly. But more than that, you're probably going to have to find a use under the county zoning code.
Mr. Neely, did you have more?
I did, I did.
Please continue, Tom.
And if we went down that path, would that require applications to the county for a zoning amendment?
It depends on the soils. If it were prime farm soils, then you'd have to take an exception. I fought one of these churches as a pro bono attorney for 1,000 Friends of Oregon. He was successful on it. After that, they came back with an exception and talked about the religious use of the property. 1,000 Friends instructed me as their lawyer not to oppose it because of RUPA and because of their views on the program.
But if we brought it into the urban growth boundary list and then we annexed it after that, we could assign it a zoning that would make the, the envisioned use acceptable.
Use the difficulty of that, and that is taking it in, into the boundary and not putting a use side at that time. And that's going to be the, the thing that's going to make people suspicious. You can try to do it, but when that's tried, there always seems to be a slip to its cuff and lip when people find it different and more convenient and more profitable use.
So relying, there's some, some risk in relying on a promised use as a reason to bring land into the UGB.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Next question I have relates to the steep slopes, particularly as it relates to the comedic property. And this discussion kind of reminds me of the discussion we had as related to Newell Creek Canyon when we were discussing the urban, urban and rural reserves, where we decided to set the urban reserves up to like the contour of the steep slope and then we set a buffer back. a buffer back from that, which is kind of the way I'm kind of, because there are some very steep slopes here, the way I, 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 and for consistency's sake, especially the way I'm inclined to look at this one also. Aside from the steep slopes is the landslide hazard, and I want Tony to tell me if I'm missing something or we benefited from being the community that was chosen for this experiment for doing some lidar maps that were completed by Dogamian's landslide hazards. And I'm, I don't see those landslide hazard maps as part of this analysis. Is that correct, that they're not part of the analysis?
I did not, I did not pull those. It's not a good point to put together.
Well, for that reason, that is enough of a reason for me to suggest to my colleagues that I prefer to continue this, this discussion, to set it over probably one commission meeting and in interviewing times, have those ladder maps at our disposal as part of this analysis.
May I ask you, how does that affect your decision about whether it comes into the UGB or not? I mean, because of the usable acres right now, it's just unusable?
Just to go back to our discussion of the urban reserves, and I remember Commissioner Neely making this point very effectively and convincing me. We may think that we can protect sensitive lands with the appropriate zoning ordinances, but that really depends on correct enforcement of the ordinances. And I think it was Commissioner Neely that raised the example of the Newell Creek condos that slid down the hill. You know, we have ordinances and everything in place, they slid down, slid down the hill. The most effective way to preserve sensitive lines like that is to not have them designated as urbanizable. Because once you, and where I'm trying to, yeah, my argument is, if the plateaus are not hazardous as far as landslide, I wouldn't mind at all adding them to the UGB recommendation as part of this process. I would advocate though, and this is just a discussion suggestion at this point, because I really think it's a pretty complicated question, and I'd like to set, set it over. If, if we really want to protect the sensitive lands, I would just prefer to not include them in the UGB and leave them not designated as, as urban growth boundary expansion area. I, I think the urban reserve designation that's on these lands probably took place a while ago before, for example, we had these lidar maps. And so I, I don't know what was the analysis back then when they were included as urban reserve, but.
Urban reserve is a neutral designation. It's brand new.
So were these, okay, so then maybe, let me refresh our collective memory. The urban reserve designation is on these lands now. And, and that, they were designated as such during our process, this, this spring?
This time.
Okay.
We voted against it. So.
That's true. That's true.
Oh, okay. So that adds another insult on it, right? So we, we, the segment, the, the properties we're considering now, we did not want to include as what Metro did.
Right, so they are now all designated, as is all of Newell Creek Canyon, urban reserve.
Okay.
So after, I would like to ask if, if, we, we don't have the ability to break up parcels?
Fortunately with this, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, go ahead and respond best.
So this is, this is one tax law. We really tried when we recommended the urban reserve areas to follow tax law lines, so you didn't end up with a property that was half inside the urban growth boundary, half outside the urban growth boundary. And then I guess the second part is that with, with this request, since it hasn't been reviewed by Metro, we need to have a recommendation to them by Friday, this Friday.
So we don't have the luxury of time on this one.
And I, and going back to what we just, what we just adopted and implemented at the beginning of August with our code changes concerning steep slopes and landslide areas, if you have a steep slope, you have a 50-foot buffer around that that you need to look at. If you have a slide area, you have a 200-foot buffer to look around, that, that would fall within there. So the exact location of the Dagami Slide, I, I don't know without looking at the Dagami map, but you know, those are the buffers that we're, that we're dealing with adjacent to slopes. And what you see on, on the map exhibit 1C that I provided you, that, that bright red is well in excess of that. But it doesn't tell you exactly where a slide potential may be or a historic landslide.
And just if I could have a dimension of the discussion as well, well, and I know that we have other speakers, but it's really, it's a discussion on, about what Oregon City's needs are, both for residential, commercial businesses, residential, and the rights, you know, property owners' desires. And, and then another discussion in five years. So is it, is it, you know, now at the time with balancing those needs, or is five years a, a time for reevaluating some of those cases with that Commissioner Neely?
Of course, actually, of course, Commissioner Neely brought up a little too, so I was interested in that you want to pursue it from the standpoint of the need for looking at, we're going to make quoted with how many billable acres there are there potentially, but we don't know that's true.
And they're thinking something.
Yeah, and given issues of slides and probably slopes that are in that area, and I don't know if all those things could be picked up by the lidar, in-lidar process, presumably it'll all be picked up. Maybe you just want to know how many billable acres are there. I want, I want to come back to these question, you know, the assembly area. You, I think the interpretation was that there might be, an industry group, a, a private group, for example, might be able to look for some designation from the county to permit those kinds of sandwiches. Is that correct?
Or to get an exception. And that was the process that 1,000 Friends did not oppose because that is the safety valve. So it is possible on rural lands, I don't think it's highly recommended, but on rural lands, it is possible to get a place of public assembly as a church or religious related use, notwithstanding the fact that the goals may oppose it and the administrative rules implementing the goal may oppose it.
It is clear to me that the, the interest that you had would not necessarily be down in an urban setting. It sounded like you were interested in an urban setting. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So.
Now, you need to use it. Would you, I, I assume that it's probably easier to do with properties separately? What do you, I don't have my mind.
You mean these, this, the four tax?
No, the comedic property.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're dealing with three properties.
Three properties, yeah.
Yeah, and I see no one stepped up speaks, so if there's a motion that you'd like to make for discussion.
There's another comment, I think I'm even more in the general aspect of the storm water treatment sign where that occurred, for example, Newell Creek area and so forth, there are things that we don't do anymore, I don't think.
Not climate change.
Our codes have changed, and it's really difficult to visualize in an area like this where if you, for example, retain or detain your water, that potentially could trigger movement as well in, in such areas. And it's very difficult for me to visualize on-site stormwater detention. And I, I think without knowing how we, how we should deal with stormwater detentions in these kinds of areas, I have a general problem on understanding how we'd want to go forward in something like this.
What, you know, it's, it's very, it's very difficult to design a site at this, at this level. I, I would rely on what our stormwater manual requires. It would need to be engineered, where the discharge is going to occur and whatnot, you know, that's pure speculation at this point as to how that site would be designed, where we would take the, the stormwater, but realistically, it's going to go to the northeast corner, that's the low point of the site, that's where you're going to treat it if you're not treating it through other methods, whether, and, and you recall, we've updated our code, we are, we're looking at low-impact design standards and street design, you know, there's, there's all turn, all kinds of options to treat stormwater. What's exactly going to be here? I couldn't tell you that right now. But we treat, we treat stormwater on, on flat areas and then we do discharge it into waterways, which does include going down steep slope areas. Would the design, would putting any storm pot on this site necessarily lead to the, the slope failing? I, I don't think that's, that's the case. You know, it would be appropriately designed so that, with that being in consideration, with the appropriate buffers from there to avoid, avoid that happening. Once again, I, I rely on our, our stormwater manual, which I believe is, would, it would be adequate for urban development.
I, I want to, I want to reiterate what I think the mayor mentioned is that our codes have changed a lot. I mean, they, we have much, much, much more protection in our geological hazards code today than we had back in the 90s when a couple of developments that were approved for the edge of Nol King were developed. And.
In fact, not to interrupt, but I believe that Sappus told us that we probably would not have cited those under today's code.
Well, they would have been designed differently.
Way differently, okay.
Right, there was some, and the other part of it goes beyond the design and that's the maintenance of your facilities. And so we have a lot stronger maintenance provisions today as well to make sure people are taking care of their facilities. So I guess I would say that I think the cities in a, that you're much better positioned to protect against a bad design that would be, would have, would cause additional risk to some of the geological hazards in that area. And part of our geological hazards code addresses stormwater. And then there's the period year as well.
Okay, I just knew the discussion along. I, I paused for, for the period of, again, moving forward, that we, that, that I don't think Oregon City with a straight face can prove that, or, or can, logical discussion can say that we need that Maple Lane property. So I, if, if others feel that way, I mean, I think Tony's analysis is absolutely terrific. You know, we've had a slowdown today, today, meaning the last few years, we don't see evidence that it's going to increase. We have an infill, we have much infill that we can do in Oregon City. We have the two new, two new areas that have not developed at all, but have potential. And I, I just think that in five years, we can reexamine. If the economy starts to perk, yeah, that's, that's, that's more developable land, but I think right now, I'm, I just don't think it passes necessarily the straight face test for, for Oregon City. We, we just don't have demand or need for that. I'd like, for that as well, if we'd like to make a motion, we could dispatch that one. While we're discussing the two property owner requests. Do you want to talk about it?
My, my comment is not about Maple Lane.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that thought in on that.
Okay. Commissioner West.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to put off looking at the Maple Lane area for an urban reserve for the next five years, until the UGB is looking at in five years.
Could I suggest?
Right, it's different language, yeah.
I was trying to find that.
That the planning director be authorized on behalf of the city to recommend that the Maple Lane property not be added to the urban growth boundary.
So moved.
Right. Who's that, Commissioner West, and who's that, Commissioner Neely?
They're raised.
Yeah, does everyone understand what we're going on?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, Nancy, vote please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Zeta?
Aye.
Mayor North?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Okay, now, Commissioner Zeta, I think we want to continue your discussion.
Okay, I wanted to ask again, in, as it pertains to Mr. Dristo's comment about the consultation with the Phillyum Park folks. To what extent were neighboring property owners and homeowners associations and the CIC consulted on, on this process?
On the process?
As recommending these particles?
This, this property?
Yeah.
I received this request last Tuesday. I processed it for your application and for your packet on Wednesday, and I noticed, and I created ma, I created a mailing with the agenda and mailed that to property owners surrounding the property on, on Friday afternoon.
So you did a proactive thing, not, yeah, because you assumed that.
I did, I did send an email to the CIC with a link back to the agenda, but.
Thank you.
We didn't know it was coming, we didn't have any outreach.
Okay. I'd like therefore to ask the property owner and the representative, what kind of notice did you see, receive from either the city or Metro as to the timing of your application to be included here?
No, yeah, Metro just, you know, for our announcement, I mean, it was just, it was in COO report, naturally.
It was released, I believe, about.
August 10th, yeah, August 10th. So that would be the first, yeah, and so it impacted, remember, we reported at the last meeting that we had this process, that, that local government was going to be where, instead of where the Metro, I mean, these property owners could go to Metro Council, but Metro Council finally understands that this is where we deal with community and building issues, so that it is our prerogative to recommend or not additional areas beyond those that Metro's determined to study.
For inclusion in the urban growth boundary, we're considering.
For consideration.
Consideration.
Yes, if we recommend it, we are recommending to, for, really for us continued study for potential inclusion.
Correct.
Right.
Because Metro hasn't looked at the comedic property yet. It hasn't been on their radar, it's not a property that, that they've looked at. So what we're, if, if the commission so chooses, we would forward to Metro that they consider this property as a potential UGB expansion area to meet the residential needs over the next four years.
No, I don't, I believe they have to go up or down on that. I don't think, like I say, a body like we are, we can take anything they want, I guess. Okay, Commissioner West.
So then what I'm hearing is, so Metro gave us the short timeframe from August 10th to December 3rd, but this is just for consideration, so really it's not a done deal, right? It was just a recommendation, and then there still will be opportunity for people to weigh in, is what I'm hearing.
Correct, but if, if, if you want, we have till September 27th to submit public comments addressing the COO report from Metro. We have till September 3rd if we want any other lands to be looked at that aren't in that COO report. So if this property, if this property is not recommended to Metro, but it's the 3rd, that's it. So next time around.
But the other property, because it was originally in the Metro study, that 80, 8,000 acres has a different timeline.
Correct. My interpretation would be that we could disagree with during the public comment period about Metro's finding that it doesn't contribute.
So I'm wondering if in essence of time, then, we should move on to Mr. Johnson's property first, because we can put that over a week or two and get more public testimony. And maybe we could, maybe we could get somewhere that way and then we'll deal with the comedic at the end.
Okay, let's, let's do that. I, I like that suggestion, and I'm going to narrow it further because I don't believe that we have, I guess we do have the authority, but I don't know that, that, we do not have a request from anyone except those two property owners. And so unless you see otherwise, I believe that we need to consider the request from those two property owners.
I agree.
Okay, so may we have a good more discussion on that then, or a motion? So it's. So it's, um, the motion would be, of course, to not consider it this round? Or to, uh, testify that we'd like those properties added back into the study? Commissioner Neely?
Well, what you posited before really was a blind everything, I think. My guess is that some of those properties are now, uh, not even adjacent to land that we've annexed, so, um, and given the slow rate of growth, I, I think at this point, it's just been matured to, to put those properties forward. And we, we can, we can discuss it at another meeting, but I'm not sure that I'd be convinced otherwise.
Oh, uh, uh, I'm listening to, I, I just didn't catch that they weren't adjacent. I'm sorry, I was thinking that they were.
They're adjacent to our urban growth boundary, but they're not adjacent to any annexations, I mean, I don't think.
I thought, I thought they were adjacent to city limits.
Let's, let's clarify, they, they are, they are.
City, city.
Yes, to city limits, so.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, Commissioner Nocita.
Just got another question about, about Metro's process. If we do not recommend the comedic property, does that prevent the family from going straight to Metro?
Yes.
It does.
It needs to come with a letter from the local.
And, and Metro, when it, when it, when it expands the urban growth boundary, it does it by full tax lot, it will not split a tax lot.
I don't know that that's the case, no, because we do have instances where we do have tax lots that have been split historically. From a policy standpoint, I would highly recommend it. It is extremely difficult on the land use side. Once that property's annexed, end up with a split property that's in the city limits and part of it outside the U G B.
If, if you recall, as we looked at the possible urban reserve, real, real reserve, Metro kind of took a look and went like that. And then Tony in the planning department looked at exact property lines, so it became a very jagged edge as, as part of the detailed review. So on, if you want to, I'll go with something. Okay, we need to make a determination of what you take the, the terms up to do with the Johnson family and property.
I move not to, just not to Metro consideration.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, is there a second?
Second.
Second and by Commissioner Nocita, is there further discussion on that? Okay, ready? Go ahead.
So why, um, because it's slow building now, that's what you're saying, is the reason?
Well, I'll give you a couple of other reasons. We have had nothing but failures in terms of major annexations in our own city, for one thing. I mean, uh, we're at a slow growth point. We, I think in terms of land that's in the sea at this, this time, uh, we've got to find mechanisms by which citizens believe that the road is going to pay for itself. And secondly, that the, the need for those properties for specific uses is, is, is real. Or we're, and we're not doing that.
Further discussion? By Nancy both please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor North?
Aye, motion passes five zero. So we're looking at five years, I guess. If you buy now, the comedic property, which needs, uh, the decision needs to be made this evening, because we didn't need on that one, but this one is time sensitive. Um, do you have a motion for more discussion on comedic property?
I have a motion.
Commissioner Nocita?
I'm going to perfectly with saying it's a very, very tough call for me because, um, um, I can see, I can, uh, see the family's desires, and I can see the, the benefits of this. Um, I, I guess where, now the discussion we've had tonight, where it come down to this is the fact that, um, out of consistency with our earlier, um, conclusion after a lot of, a very long and recent process that this should not be, um, designated as an urban reserve, um, um, and the truncated time that Metro's given us, um, and the lack of information for the, the insufficient information I feel that I recently, basing a decision like this on, um, I'm going to move, uh, that the city not include the comedic property, um, as a recommendation to, uh, to Metro.
Move by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely, is there further discussion? Nancy, Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
And Mayor North?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you for bringing those properties in, I think it was a good discussion for, for us to have. Um, do you have any concluding remarks, Senator, on process?
Oh, and just not hearing any, um, concerns about the other, um, policy changes into the framework of a functional plan or amending the, uh, the twenty forty, um, process plan.
Okay, let's move on then to the next, um, discussion item, which is, oops, just jumping in, sorry. The dedication, I believe. Let's see what it is. Yeah, hold on. There we go. Uh, the dedication temporary construction easement and a settlement agreement with a, a project on one three zero zero one Placemaster River Drive, the resident road crossing as part of our Doug Handle project. And special.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the last, um, property acquisition and temporary construction easement that we have, um, completed, the Doug Handle project. And, um, this is one that we, um, entered into a settlement agreement with the property owner. The, um, the actual due dedication is for right of way required for the new Washington Street, uh, configuration and underneath the, what will be the bridge, um, underneath Highway two thirteen. And then temporary construction easement is needed above that to build a retaining wall for that section of Washington Street, as well as along the existing Placemaster Drive, there has to be construction there. Um, that'll just be temporary, impact the property owner to, um, construct the new line about. And we, um, have successfully reached a settlement agreement, um, with the assistance of us of the attorney's office and the appraiser who was very helpful on this. And we're asking for your approval of the due dedication, temporary construction easement and the settlement agreement.
Okay, is there any, um, discussion, I have questions for Nancy or your friends? Now, may I have a motion of approval, for approval, please?
I move for a temporary destruction easement settlement agreement, um, for, uh, so I'll, I'll see, uh, thirteen double whole one part and she will go.
Move by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
I include the D.
Don't you miss the D?
D.
D?
Put it in there.
We have everything we need in the motion now. As it's written, um, Nancy, no further comment, Nancy the vote please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita? Mayor North?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next item is a conditional letter, um, from regarding a FEMA project. Hold on, Nancy explain it, anyway. I got mixed up on my explanation, either. Regarding the Portland Milwaukee Light Rail Bridge, um, we have been requested to submit a letter of concurrence with a FEMA related water project, which Nancy now will explain in great detail.
This request has come from TriMet and the city of Portland. Um, as you know, the Portland to Milwaukee Light Rail, uh, extension, uh, requires a Willamette River crossing that'll be for buses, light rail, pets and bikes. And in building a new bridge across Willamette River, there will be two large, um, columns that penetrate the river with puddings, or, or piers that go into the bedrock below the, the river. Because of that mass, it's going to be placed in the river to support the bridge. It does, this is in the floodway, and it does have a small impact on the floodplain elevation. We're talking about the hundred year floodplain elevation primarily. And the rise in downtown Portland is about, uh, three quarters of an inch for the hundred year flood. That amount, of course, decreases as you head towards Oregon City, and at the falls, there is no increase, obviously. But, um, yeah, just below the falls, the rise in our hundred year floodplain would be about a quarter of an inch. And it's probably important to note that the, um, the error in this modeling is enough to say that these numbers could, could be off by, they could be much less. It's, there's like a two inch, two inch modeling error, so it's kind of difficult. But nonetheless, they, they are considered to be minor increases. And you can imagine the bridge piers, it's, it's not like building a large subdivision or something in the, in the floodplain. But anyway, so in order to, um, construct this with the impact of the floodplain and in the floodway, the city of Portland had to pass a variance that allows this to occur. And, um, and then FEMA has to approve any kind of rise in the flood elevation, so it's fairly complicated process. And as part of FEMA, uh, so the city of Portland has to send both a conditional letter of map provision to FEMA, and then after the bridge is completed, a letter of map provision, which is a, the two are the CLOMAR and the LOMAR. And in order for the city of Portland to send in the application for the CLOMAR, they need to get, um, letters of support, um, or concurrence from the city's upstream of the project whose floodplains are also impacted. And so they've asked that the city manager submit a letter of concurrence, and, um, we felt like this is something that we wanted to have the city commission, um, provide, um, approval for us to send a sort of a letter to the city of Portland and to TriMet and subsequently to FEMA.
Any questions about the letter of the process? Thank you, you explained that very well. It's, uh, really a matter of form, but you know, I appreciate you bringing it to, um, our attention and public attention because I think these projects are so big, it's nice to know how we're affected down, down river. Um, they have a motion then for? I do, I do, Commissioner West.
I don't have a comment, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
With so much decisions, but why can't we require them to make a cut to make up the difference? I'm certain, I want to check this.
What I'd like to mention, and is in your materials, and probably my staff report too, that's trying to keep things so succinct, is that they've done a lot to minimize the impacts at the point of the grid.
I listen.
Yeah, yeah, if you have, then actually real work though. Commissioner West?
Well, I will make a motion, um, to approve the city manager's submitted letter of concurrence for the city of Portland FEMA conditional letter of map provision and letter of map revision for the TriMet Portland Milwaukee White, uh, Willamette River Bridge Crossing.
Certainly. Move by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely, is there further comment? Nancy, Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor North?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next item of business is resolution ten twenty-two, which exempt, uh, to exempt the I two five two thirteen, uh, big project, our Doug Handle, transportation improvement project from competitive bidding requirement for a public improvement contract and authorizing the best value alternative contracting process. Nancy, you are.
Thank you. Um, this is, uh, uh, something that we have not done in the city of Oregon City before. The contracting method that we're asking the city commission to approve here, um, which will exempt us from the traditional public bidding process by resolution, is one that involves price qualifications and technical approach. As you know, typically, we just go for the low, the low price. And, um, ODOT, the OPEC engineering staff, who's the primary, um, design consultant on the project as well as our staff, have, um, are very, we're very familiar with this question at this point. The project is a very complicated project, and it requires a lot of, um, experience and a high level of sophistication and contracting ability, um, not only the prime contractor, but also subcontractors. Not to say we also do not need to consider price. And what we're proposing is that we use this A plus equals D method, which is called the best value process for complex projects such as this. And we, um, solicit bids and score each of the bids on first qualifications and technical approach. And then we open up the cost envelopes and score, determine who's got the low cost. And then using all three of those criteria, we select who we think is the best contractor, most qualified with the best technical approach and with, um, a reasonably priced for the project. The other thing what we need to do in, in your making of findings to exempt us from the, uh, the typical bidding process is we need to show that we don't, this does not result in favoritism, and it does result in substantial savings for the city. And, um, there's quite a bit of, I think, very good findings in here that, um, our engineers and our city attorney's office worked on, and then I, um, also worked on it. So that I think we have adequate set of findings here, and in fact, I think we actually do a very good job of showing that this is the best, um, bidding, uh, process for this particular project. Do you have any questions about any of the, uh, findings or remarks that are made? Um, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Commissioner Neely?
I just assume there aren't that many, uh, firms that can go ahead and essentially create a, close down highway and create a bridge and put it in.
Four days, four days.
Right, and yet there are several that have done that.
Yeah.
And, um.
Those would be probably in your list.
Yeah, and it will still, it'll be open and some, there'll be a lot of subcontractors in the project. Um, but we really think that this will, um, bring to us the contractors that can deliver the project most efficiently, because it's extremely important to get delivered efficiently and on time and on budget, because, um, being, being very competent in this nature of construction is what will help us get there.
I should have said, solve version, I'd build one, it'll take them longer than four days to build a bridge.
Further questions or?
I'll go ahead and move, uh, to, uh, exempt the, and I'll go ahead and read. For the resolution exempting the Doug Handle transportation proven project from competitive bidding required or a public improvement contract and authorizing the best value alternative contracting process.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner, Miss, uh, West. Uh, further comments?
I have a question of, of the city manager and the city attorney. If either of you have experience to deal with this type of contracting, and do you see any red flags, the particular benefits?
No, uh, this is the first time I've seen this kind of, of value crisis. I know that it's used, and that ODOT uses it, we look to ODOT for the format. And it started with legal stuff being put together, I'm, I'm fairly confident in it. And, uh, I, I know Nancy's confident in her area, and that, uh, if she says she needs a, a special type of contractor, she's always justified it to me, and, uh, I don't have any, any heartburn about this at all.
Would you, uh, did it use this in the process?
I think we might have used it for part of our public safety station. The only issue we're running to there where the bully concerns, and you don't know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you, Nancy, go up please.
Commissioner Newley?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next, we have a consideration of commission policy 111, which is reimbursement for commissioner expenses. We discussed this at our work session and Nancy has provided us with the final draft of our proposed policy, so if you have questions about that or Nancy want to?
Yes, I just wanted to point out one added thing. In the interim, we discovered that, um, if you look on the first page of your, the policy, there's a special note there and, um, it's related to an addition of the, of a state rule by the Oregon Edith Commission relating to the acceptance of the gift of travel. And what that means exactly is that the rule requires that before a member of the city commission accept an offer for the gift of travel expenses, the city commission must approve the purpose of the activity as an officially sanctioned trade promotion or a fact-finding mission or trip or officially designated negotiations or economic development activities. So, um, there's a, the, the new rule is requiring the full commission to, or council to, um, approve that. That's, that's what's built into the rule. If you, if you don't want that, if you want to give each individual commissioner, you know, just let them decide that on their own, um, then you need to pass a resolution to do that. So we've built that in as it is and if you want the resolution, we can draft that and bring that through the next meeting, but it's up to you.
I, I think it's excellent. Um, this, bigger cities do this, for instance, you know, when the air freshener goes off to China to try to lure a solar plant. Uh, but I also think that in the interest of transparency and openness, that is perfectly appropriate that we approve that together, for I'm saying, sorry, it was a great, great addition. Any contrary? Anything else? Okay, uh, I know we talked about a lot of things, I am sure you all looked, this is one of those in there. Um, I think you provided a great deal of clarity for, from our discussion, Nancy, I appreciate that. So if you don't have any other discussion, would you like a motion for adoption of all of these documents, the policy plus the forms that we're adopting? Commissioner Nocita?
I will move approval of commission policy one dash eleven, reimbursement of commissioner expenses with all associated supporting documentation.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there anything further? Yes, do you have a public comments? There you go. That's fine, I just have time, I appreciate that.
Things we didn't get from that live in Oregon City, and I apologize for interruption, but I'm just, some of the rooting on this, uh, it's switched into the second person. For example, on page two, we talked about lodging, you will need to provide the final motel bill, and I'm wondering if, yeah, it's right working.
Yeah, that's the leftover from the old policy, I thought, yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple places in there, look, you are not sharing the room with the blah, 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 blah. It just sounded...
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. I believe we can adopt it with the understanding that those changes would just be changed to the first person. The English speaking, English speaking. Okay. Thank you for that. So with that understanding, make a vote. That's it.
Commissioner Newley?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Good, that's kind of updated. Now, the consent agenda, we have several items, we have motion for adoption.
Uh, move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. On the consent agenda, Nancy, vote please.
Commissioner Newley?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes fire zero. Under communications, we'll begin with our city manager, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. I want to let you know that, uh, first off, I've been pretty busy in the last two weeks trying to, uh, actually not trying, but seeding and initiating some discussions with Clackamas County officials to seek some economic development assistance for, to create a program to mitigate the effects that the potential bridge closure will have on our, our downtown businesses. They do have some discretionary funds, but of course, there's always competing needs and interests. And, um, I've had a couple of discussions this week, a couple last week with, uh, the county administrator's office and deputies and also economic development staff there. We now have our economic development director, Dan Brentlaw, and downtown manager, Lloyd Purdy, um, meeting with their staff this week trying to design some criteria for a program that might help get more people into the downtown during the bridge closure. So, uh, anyway, that's one of the things I've been working on this week. And then Nancy Kay has a couple of projects that she wants to update council.
This is regarding, um, our property at 1810 Washington Street. Um, what we were proposing that we, we use this property for the construction contractors and inspectors to use the site for their trailers during construction. And a place we thought maybe we could use the building and one we sent staff down to Hockin Palace. Surprise. They, they came back, they came back with a really strong recommendation.
And a headache, probably.
That, um, that it was, they were really very concerned about the safety and, um, the ability to do any kind of refurbishment to the structure that would cost, um, any less than providing trailers, which the contractor would provide the trailers. But, um, the other school, we, um, we, we are recommending, I've been talking to the city manager and, um, I think he concurs, that we'll be demolishing this building finally. And then, yeah, and it, it was at least for a while through Argonian and it's just is not, it's, it's an embarrassment really to have as a, as a building that we would consider using for people. So we thought we'd just let you know that, um, if you see this being demolished in the next several months, that that's fine.
Can I ask, um, I assume it will be constructed and recycled?
We'll see what we can use out of it.
Can we, can we hold the firm that is used for this, uh, uh, non-responsible, if they accidentally knock it over?
I, I think we're... Five-tiders can use it as a practice.
That's right, yeah.
So that's one update for you.
Thank you.
And, um, then another one is that, uh, several of our staff and I believe the mayor are attending a meeting tomorrow to discuss high, high-speed rail in the Willamette Valley. And ODOT has just released their Oregon Rail Study that actually studies rail throughout this entire state. And, um, I think we're expecting a little more focus on the Willamette Valley because that's where we're mostly talking about high-speed rail. But this, this report, while being just an introduction into doing future studies and environmental assessments, with money the city is hoping to get from the federal government, the chapter on the section between Eugene and Portland, at this time, they're recommending that it appears that the Oregon Electric Line, which would be on the other side of the river, um, until you get up to Lake Asrico, um, would be, it looks like it would be the preferred route at this time, based on the study that's been so far. And, um, therefore that we have to hear, um, out that the Union Pacific Railroad at some point would not be used for high-speed rail any longer. Now, this is just an introduction, it's had to go through a lot of environmental studies, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that process and I, I think we've talked about this before, I think it's really important to engage the community and what is, what is, where does Oregon City stand on this important matter? Not only have we invested, um, in, in, in high-speed rail infrastructure by building the Amtrak platform and the station and parking lot, um, some of that has been federal funding that's assisted us with that. But, um, but otherwise, where do we stand on it? Do we, more trains, et cetera? So I'm hoping we can have some kind of, um, local meetings where we present the information we're getting from the studies that ODOT's performing and ODOT representing there too. But I think they're, they would want to have focus groups as well. But just want you to know that the, the, um, metro, the Portland metro cities and counties are starting to need on this issue and we will be, um, very active in bringing it back to the community and of course, the commission.
Well, I think we know actually initially what the community wants from the, for open houses that have already been housed. I mean, um, we, we'd like to keep our, our track. So I think there may be some alternative ways that we can do it. Maybe it's two or some, you know, a slower side and a faster side. But, but I, I think we do know that our community would like to keep that station, we have a lot invested in it, public dollars.
And it could be that the, at some point, we'll need to discuss, well, what if you get reimbursed for all the money that's been invested in the station? What about the other values that come with high-speed rail and, and the things that are the downside of high-speed rail coming through the community? There's reasons why some of the communities don't want it. So I think it's something that we want to really stay on top of because we don't want to miss an opportunity to make sure our voice is heard.
What's an interesting to note too is apparently when we placed the Amtrak station there and made all those significant investments over the years, we were following the, the ODOT statewide accrue plan, uh, for that. So, you know, if there's going to be a change in the plan after we've invested money, I think at least at minimum, some sort of reimbursement would be appropriate.
Yeah, some scrutiny of the numbers, the modeling, I believe that was sent in some questions that have to do with, well, how, how is the freight traffic being modeled? We really haven't seen what that, and what input and there's a lot of technical information that we want to see and then the public policy standpoint as well. And one last thing for you, um, thank you for your time, is that we, we will be seeing a couple of little projects in downtown Oregon City. Um, there's going to be a stormwater improvement project in, along Main Street and then there's a new water line being constructed along Eighth Street. And, um, we've been working with the downtown businesses, but we're in close contact with all the property owners that are right adjacent to the, to the, um, projects. And that's why we're waiting so long, we're kind of trying to get through the summer, get through the antique fair, get through the car show. And, um, and we're also working with the farmers market. So I just want you to know that as you see that occurring, they shouldn't last very long and some of the work will occur at night, but, um, there will be, and you've approved the contracts previously, but just so you, there will be more construction activity downtown in the next month at night, I mean.
It was very interesting. Construction activity, um, appears to be slightly less annoying to the public because it shows that there are people working and that have jobs. I, I'm hearing just a slight difference in the tone of complaint.
And then the Leyland Road reconstruction is also going to be starting in the next few weeks and the story seal will actually be not occurring till the end of September. We're crossing our fingers on rain.
What, what pieces of Leyland Road?
It's going between Warner Parrot and Warner Millie down to, um, Moxon Way.
I heard a lot of people expressing their pleasure that that's going to happen.
But you just called out Leyland at that point is Myers Road.
Okay, there we go. Oh, wow.
Hallelujah on that one.
Yep.
That's that real one.
What's been described to me as the worst road in Oregon City.
I think so too.
It's been described to me that way.
I agree. So Nancy, just to follow up on, on the, the use of our PMA, our payment maintenance utility, um, which does the story seal and the PMA. When is our next report then? Is it like the end of the season?
Well, you're checking, will you do your annual report when you're doing the work in the year in March? We got, we did. The annual report is prepared for the budget season, so you can see what was happening in the previous year.
Okay.
I was just going to say in terms of, uh, the ability to drive on it, I think the quarter would be a great after too.
Which section? Oh, between, uh, Leyland and, um, Central Point?
Yeah.
Eastern Central Point, right.
Commissioner West, could you get your?
Well, I, I just wanted to ask you, Nancy, or maybe it's Mayor Norris, I have to ask, so, uh, what do we, what can we do as commission to work on this high-speed rail? So let us know if there's a meeting you should be at or?
I, I think if we want to hold something local, that's a really good place for us to be present.
Yeah, that would, that's would be very important to me.
We'll bring you back the report. Mr. Fraser, anything?
That's all.
Okay. Um, under my report, I have a couple of things. I'm not sure that in the flurry of writing grants being sent out, that you have been informed of the Hunt Grant that we submitted last, was it last week? I believe it was. Do you want to give us a brief summary, Dan? Because I think that it's good to know what we're, what we're doing. I, I was in charge of getting, uh, support letters from other partner agencies that came up with them. You may not be on.
Okay.
Now you're on.
The, the emphasis of the grant is for linking transportation and housing. And so when we put the grant together, we, we focused on, uh, both market rate and affordable housing in our regional center and also a big focus on getting high-capacity transit to Oregon City. Uh, the Metro completed a, uh, HCT High Capacity Transit Study last year and identified two corridors that you're probably aware of. One is the continuation of light rail from Milwaukee to Oregon City and the other potential line is from Clackamas Town Center to Oregon City. So part of this money would be to analyze those in terms of what would work best for Oregon City. And then also to take a look at providing more housing in our regional center and downtown. The amount we applied for, you know, we shot from the sky, we asked for $400,000, um, in terms of the total cost of the project. There's a 20% match, so if we get the full amount, it would be 300,000, our responsibility would be 100,000 dollars. We, as part of the proposal, put together what we thought was inciting services in terms of staff time and came up with about 53,000. So that would be about 47,000 we'd have to fund through urban renewal over a two-year period. And that's if we get the full amount of the grant. If we got a smaller amount, then of course, our share would be less. So, so it's a very competitive grant there. Our, I, I'm sure it's about every community in USA probably got the grant in, um, but, uh...
But only two in metro area.
It was only two?
Well, Portland has one, is a little different category.
Portland, Clackamas, and... The county, you know, Clackamas County also. But, uh, yeah, it was a quick timeline, we got our grants, um, in, in time and, uh, we have confirmation that, that it is received, so we're gonna keep our fingers crossed.
On AM, um, I think we've been talking for eight years at least about which alignment should light rail, should it come through and see where, where should it go? And so it's great to have a possible ability to say that.
And one of the things that, you know, we learned from Metro is, um, a lot of these corridors, the way Metro prioritizes them is, is, you know, what has the community done to do some proactive planning? And, you know, we really haven't done that much and, and thinking if we can get this grant and do the project, then it'll put us ahead of a lot of other communities and maybe move those, uh, light rail line extensions up, move Oregon City up in terms of priorities.
Thank you. Most of the things from which I said, um, have, haven't covered met, so took the August, the end of August off, so I don't have much, but I do have, um, one thing I want to emphasize and that is, um, the Chamber, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, um, commissioned, put together a survey to survey their, um, members plus, uh, I think the intent was the broader community, they did a, they did a great job putting it together, put a lot of energy and time into it and, um, then presented it to the Government Affairs Committee, which has a little pushback on it. But, um, actually, I have it here for you, um, loaded in, um, so you can see it. Um, it was really quite interesting to me, uh, when you look at the survey results because essentially 80% of the community is very supportive of the Rivers Project and 90%, give or take some percentage points there, are supportive of, of the Cove Project. Um, and then it talks about other things in, in Oregon City as well. But the pushback at the Government Affairs Committee was that this isn't a statistically valid sample and... and that it's 100-plus, I believe, respondents. Whereas the statistical sample for a community loss type would be about 400, a little bit over 400. And to my, and the chamber this morning at Good Morning Oregon City talked about getting more samples to get up to 400. Well, that still doesn't make it statistically accurate. It's just more respondents. So my suggestion is that because particularly those projects, they're the elephant in the room. Every time we try to move forward on either one of them, we bump into, well, I don't know if the community likes that or not. And so I would like to propose that probably urban renewal, because it's probably where we can find some, some money, that we do a public opinion poll, that's with a reputable agency. And I'm told that it might cost under, under $10,000, I don't know where that goes. But to essentially validate, the survey was fairly, fairly extensive, but to do a validation of those survey results. And I guess I would, if there occurred crisis by us, I would maybe take that to urban renewal because I believe we need budget authority. David, we have to ask.
Well, it's not a specifically budgeted item, but there, there are sufficient funds in there to do something like that if the commission chooses to do it. So I think your next urban renewal commission meeting is September 15th, or whatever it is.
We could talk about it then. You know, only two of the 10 are for reelection in that group, so it's really more of a general purpose discussion. I think that could occur at that, at that point. So I have it out there for you. Because as the chamber began that good work, it might be really good to validate it or validate the results, not this way back. Commissioner Neely.
I have no problem with your call. I do object to the word, you know, revalidate. That's not the intent.
I agree.
I think, I think it is likely that the chamber survey was a survey basically of probably chamber members. They could throw it out to the larger community, but I think it should only be regarded in that sense. Well, it's, it's not valid because you haven't done a, a random sampling. 400 members is what you need if you have a large population. If you're sampling a small population, you only need to sample that many people. But no, I, I think, I think it would be great to get the community feedback on projects that we, we've been pushing forward, particularly since we're applying where the projects don't seem to be moving ahead at this particular part. It's a good time to ask us some questions.
Commissioner Nocita.
Yeah, just a very brief comment. I think we're going to have a survey in November. It's called the City Election, and I don't think we need to spend money on this much.
That was my comment as well.
Commissioner West, I guess you have your idea.
Well, you know, I, I just a couple of things. I know I have received surveys from the school board that I'm doing studies and survey monkey. I just need to hear her there, but I think it's also a good idea to move forward on this and so we can get some clarification in our direction, not be spending time on an area where the community doesn't want us to go. And the sooner we know that, the better it is. This has been going on, this project, we've been working on it for over four years. I've been here four years, and it, they were in, in progress when I started. So I think it's a good, it's an honest way of getting some feedback.
Mayor, the only, the only thing I have yet to check on that is whether or not the urban renewal, this is an authorized expenditure for them because they have some restrictions statutorily on what, what they can spend their money for. Since their, both the projects are in the district, it may be okay, but I just, I can't, I can't say for certain that that's the case right now. So if it isn't for certain, I'll flip that back to you, and then the commission can direct us if you want to.
I think we have concurrents that, to add to urban renewal commission if it's a valid expense.
But if it, yeah, to put it on the agenda for the urban...
For discussion there, if it is a...
My point though is if it turns out that it isn't a valid expense urban renewal, then... So I kind of need to know what plan, what the fallback position is. You want me to grant back to the commission here for an agenda discussion, sort of a discussion on it?
That's right. I'll figure out another source of that.
Step to follow this. Okay, thank you. You ready for a comment?
No, I'm ready to come.
Commissioner Neely.
I do not care whether such a survey is done before the election or after the election. The notion that the, that an election is a survey, election is lots of things, and there are lots of things that concern people. I would think that the next commission would want to use such an approach to find out what the, you know, what the opinions of the population are. So I think there's a benefit to it. And if there is, I, I don't think that, I don't know what the timeline would be, but you could hold that, you could hold that survey after that election. I don't think that's an issue for us.
We can discuss that with Oregon Rail, if it's about... Okay, commissioners, do you have reports this evening from places for you, sir? Commissioner Smith.
I don't have a report, but I wanted to thank Karen Moore for pointing out that all the other commissioners were working at the Antique Fair. I was buying local though, thank you very much. And I was buying local on a really sacred day, which is the day before school, which I don't work. I did not work on that day. And anyway, great job on the Antique Fair to everyone that helped. It was, it was, it was really great. One of, I mean, they're always great, but this definitely, I think with the cooler weather and it, it just, it felt to me that there was even more people than normal, and so I really enjoyed it. I spent loads of the day down there. And, and, and the same comment of school, school starts next week, so drive slow. Most organist, we all start on Wednesday, not Tuesday. We cut Tuesday for a budget reduction day, so the first day of school has already been canceled. And the school starts pretty much statewide Wednesday, and so just slow down and keep an eye out for kids.
Just to link back on activities, September 11th, don't forget, there's another activity in downtown Oregon City. And then such premier activities, I'm just excited about all the events that are taking place. It's just beginning to garner a lot of enthusiasm, and the business, business owners that I've talked to or talked to me certainly been enthusiastic about that. So not only, often we have a flag ceremony on the bridge, but due to the bridge closure, and that's the bridges in, I, I think it's yet unconfirmed, but I believe it will have sort of a commemorative moment at 10 o'clock at Liberty Plaza with color garden flags and a moment of commemoration silently there. So that's kind of part of, part of that event, but they all come down there for the cruise dance.
Might have to take the elevator to the flagger, the 9/11 ceremony too, because gee, with all those cars all be...
Those are the...
Yeah. But can you finish? On the same, I forgot too, on the order of events, it's First Friday Downtown Art Walk this weekend. It's a holiday weekend, so for those of you that aren't heading out of town, that are having a staycation, come join us downtown and see some of our new art.
Good, thank you.
Well, mine are in the form of analysis. It's not anything that I should be done. I'd like to come compliment again the Parks and Recreation Department for a very conscious and park series. It was, most of them are well attended. We had some local artists, which I, I think is very good. I think there are some others that we could probably bring into the program too, that was due to see some more artists in it. I believe we've got a public meeting on the Circulation Study a week from today. At what time and where is that going to be?
It's this week, isn't it?
It's going to be from today.
Um, let me check my calendar. Oh, yeah, sorry, next up is... It's number eight, or eighth, from six to eight.
From six to eight.
At City Hall.
So six to eight here, Circulation Today, I think it's, well, we're coming to there. Just to see that. Those are the two houses.
Hey, oh, Commissioner Nocita.
Yes, first, a question for the city manager. Do we know what's going to be on the agenda for the work session next week? That, that sentence, what are the general topics?
I think it's in stone, but Nancy put it right there on her computer under. It sends adabytes.
Irma-Kinger House update.
Question of Metro local share dollars.
City County Insurance Presentation.
We need a couple of very full of... Very full of agendas.
And economic group.
What about the, what do we call them usually?
Just want to make sure on that one. A couple of things, I did want to echo the kudos to the organizers of the Antique Fair this weekend, and it was more in particular for her hard work. And I did want to report that I got promoted from apprentice ice scooper to journeyman ice scooper. Moving up in the world. I also wanted to give kudos to the Community Service Department and Denise Kye, the Trail News. The nice glossy, the nice brown news in my mailbox, so this weekend I was very impressed with it. And, you know, it's a nice picture on the cover. And before the meeting, the city manager assured me that the nice glossy cover is, is not a budget. That's very nice to hear too. It looks terrific. I see. Do I have anything else? I don't think I do.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll, I'll be traveling to Chicago tomorrow and the next day, but I'll be back here on Monday.
With that, we are adjourned.